The House will come to order. Prayer by the Chaplain.
Let us pray. Gracious God, Creator of all that we see and all that we cannot see, guide us and mold us as we represent all people of this great state. As we lead in the light of a new election year, guide us, unite us, and heal us. Help us to lead through bold thinking, creative problem solving, and gracious wisdom. Heal any division among us and help us listen to the Great Spirit that leads all of us. Embolden us to step across, step up, step out, and step into the bright light of a new day. And help us to know deep down in our bones that good news is not good news until it is good news for everyone. Be with us, we pray. Amen.
The Chaplain for today is Reverend Kyle Jackson, Executive Pastor at St. Andrews Lutheran Church, Mata Medei, Minnesota. Please remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. A copy of the proclamation from the Governor is on each member's desk and also online. The Clerk will take the roll, and we will continue with the practice of members stating their location.
Akam.
Akam, Minnetonka, present.
Akam, Minnetonka, present. Albright. Albright. Anderson.
Anderson, St. Paul, present.
Anderson, St. Paul, present. Backer.
Backer, Brown's Valley, present.
Backer, Brown's Valley, present. Bonner.
Now I gotta go through the whole thing again.
Bonner.
Bonner, St. Paul, present.
Bonner, St. Paul, present. Barr.
Barr, Orient Township, present.
Barr, Orient Township, present. Baker.
Baker, St. Paul, present.
Baker, St. Paul, present. Becker Finn.
Becker Finn, Roseville, present.
Becker Finn, Roseville, present. Bennett.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present. Bernardi. Bernardi. Bierman.
Bierman, St. Paul, present.
Bierman, St. Paul, present. Bow.
Bow, St. Paul, present.
Bow, St. Paul, present. Brand.
Brand, St. Paul, present.
Brand, St. Paul, present. Cantrell.
Cantrell, Savage, present.
Cantrell, Savage, present. Carlson A.
Carlson A, Bloomington, present.
Carlson A, Bloomington, present. Carlson L.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present. Christensen.
Christensen, St. Paul, present.
Christensen, St. Paul, present. Claflin.
Claflin, South St. Paul, present.
Claflin, South St. Paul, present. Considine.
Considine, Mankato, present.
Considine, Mankato, present. Daniels.
Daniels, Fairbald, present.
Daniels, Fairbald, present. Dowd. Dowd, St. Paul, present. Davids. Davids, St. Paul, present. Daveney.
Daveney, St. Paul, present.
Daveney, St. Paul, present. Dean.
Dean, St. Paul, present.
Dean, St. Paul, present. Damuth.
Damuth, Cold Spring, present.
Damuth, Cold Spring, present. Detmer.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present. Dreskowski. Dreskowski, St. Paul, present. Eklund.
Eklund, International Falls, present.
Eklund, International Falls, present. Edelson.
Edelson, Edina, present.
Edelson, Edina, present. Elkins.
Elkin, St. Paul, present.
Elkin, St. Paul, present. Ericson.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present. Fabian.
Fabian, Roso, present.
Fabian, Roso, present. Fisher.
Fisher, St. Paul, present.
Fisher, St. Paul, present. Franzen.
Franzen, Alexandria Township, present.
Franzen, Alexandria Township, present. Freiberg.
Freiberg, Golden Valley, present.
Freiberg, Golden Valley, present. Garofalo. Garofalo. Gomez.
Garofalo, Farmington, present.
Garofalo, Farmington, present. Gomez.
Gomez, Minneapolis.
Gomez, Minneapolis, present. Green.
Green, Foster, present.
Green, Foster, present. Gressel.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present. Gunther.
Gunther, Fairmount, present.
Gunther, Fairmount, present. Haley. Haley, St. Paul, present. Halverson.
Halverson, St. Paul, present.
Halverson, St. Paul, present. Hamilton.
Hamilton, Mountain Lake, present.
Hamilton, Mountain Lake, present. Hanson.
Hanson, Harmony, present.
Hanson, Harmony, present. Hassan. Hassan. Hausmann.
Hassan, Minneapolis, present.
Hassan, Minneapolis, present. Hausmann.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present. Heinrich.
Heinrich, Anoka, present.
Heinrich, Anoka, present. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present. Herr.
Herr, St. Paul, present.
Herr, St. Paul, present. Hertas.
Hertas, Greenfield, present.
Hertas, Greenfield, present. Hornstein.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present. Howard.
Howard, Richfield, present.
Howard, Richfield, present. Hewitt.
Hewitt, Rosemount, present.
Hewitt, Rosemount, present. Johnson. Johnson. Jordan.
Jordan, Minneapolis, present.
Jordan, Minneapolis, present. Jurgens.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present. Keel.
Keel, Hammond Township, present.
Keel, Hammond Township, present. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, Plymouth, present.
Cleavorn, Plymouth, present. Cagle.
Cagle, St. Paul, present.
Cagle, St. Paul, present. Katisa Watoon.
Katisa Watoon, Eden Prairie, present.
Katisa Watoon, Eden Prairie, present. Koznick.
Koznick, Lakeville, present.
Koznick, Lakeville, present. Creshaw.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, New Brighton, present.
Kunish Podine, New Brighton, present. Lehman.
Lehman, Cohasset, present.
Lehman, Cohasset, present. Lee.
Lee, Minneapolis, present.
Lee, Minneapolis, present. Lesch.
Lesch, St. Paul, present.
Lesch, St. Paul, present. Liebling.
Liebling, Rochester, present.
Liebling, Rochester, present. Lean.
Lean, Moorhead, present.
Lean, Moorhead, present. Lilly.
Lilly, North St. Paul, present.
Lilly, North St. Paul, present. Lippert.
Lippert, Northfield, present.
Lippert, Northfield, present. Listlegard.
Listlegard, Embarrass Township, present.
Listlegard, Embarrass Township, present. Long. Long, St. Paul, present. Lucero. Lucero. Lewick.
Lewick, Aiken, present.
Lewick, Aiken, present. Mahoney.
Lucero, Eagan, present.
Lucero, present. Mahoney.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present. Mann.
Mann, St. Paul, present.
Mann, St. Paul, present. Mariani.
Mariani, St. Paul, present.
Mariani, St. Paul, present. Markwart.
Markwart, Dilworth, present.
Markwart, Dilworth, present. Mason. Mason.
Mason, Egan, present.
Mason, Egan, present. McDonald.
McDonald, Delano, present.
McDonald, Delano, present. Mecklen.
Mecklen, Deer River, present.
Mecklen, Deer River, present. Miller.
Miller, Carrollton, Texas, present.
Miller, Carrollton, Texas, present. Moeller.
Moeller, Shoreview, present.
Moeller, Shoreview, present. Moran.
Moran, St. Paul, present.
Moran, St. Paul, present. Morrison.
Morrison, Minneapolis, present.
Morrison, Minneapolis, present. Munson.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present. Murphy.
Murphy, Herman Town, present.
Murphy, Herman Town, present. Nash. Nash. Nelson M. Nelson M. Nelson N.
Nelson N, St. Paul, present.
Nelson N, St. Paul, present. New.
New, North Branch, present.
New, North Branch, present. Nor.
Nor, Minneapolis, present.
Nor, Minneapolis, present. Nornis.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present. Navatney.
Navatney, Elk River, present.
Navatney, Elk River, present. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present. Olson.
Olson, Duluth, present.
Olson, Duluth, present. O'Neill.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present. Palowski.
Palowski, Winona, present.
Palowski, Winona, present. Purcell. Purcell. Petersburg.
Petersburg, Wasika, present.
Petersburg, Wasika, present. Pearson.
Pearson, Rochester Township, present.
Pearson, Rochester Township, present. Pinto.
Pinto, St. Paul, present.
Pinto, St. Paul, present. Poppy.
Poppy, Austin, present.
Poppy, Austin, present. Poston.
Poston, Lake Shore, present.
Poston, Lake Shore, present. Pryor.
Pryor, Minnetonka, present.
Pryor, Minnetonka, present. Quam.
Quam, Byron, present.
Quam, Byron, present. Richardson.
Richardson, Mendota Heights, present.
Richardson, Mendota Heights, present. Robbins.
Robbins, Maple Grove, present.
Robbins, Maple Grove, present. Runbeck.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present. Sandell.
Sandell, Woodbury, present.
Sandell, Woodbury, present. Sandsted.
Sandsted, Hibbing, present.
Sandsted, Hibbing, present. Sauk. Sauk. Schumacher.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present. Schultz.
Schultz, St. Paul, present.
Schultz, St. Paul, present. Scott. Scott, St. Paul, present. Stevenson.
Stevenson, Coon Rapids, present.
Stevenson, Coon Rapids, present. Sandine. Sandine. Swazinski. Swazinski. Tabkey.
Nordland Township, present.
Swazinski, present. Tabkey.
Tabkey, Shakopee, present.
Tabkey, Shakopee, present. Tice.
Tice, St. Cloud, present.
Tice, St. Cloud, present. Torkelson.
Torkelson, Hanska, present.
Torkelson, Hanska, present. Erdahl.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present. Vang.
Vang, Brooklyn Center, present.
Vang, Brooklyn Center, present. Vogel.
Vogel, Alco Newmarket, present.
Vogel, Alco Newmarket, present. Wagenius.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, St. Paul, present.
Wazlowick, St. Paul, present. West.
West, Blaine, present.
West, Blaine, present. Winkler.
Winkler, Golden Valley, present.
Winkler, Golden Valley, present. Wagamot.
Wagamot, St. Cloud, present.
Wagamot, St. Cloud, present. Zhong Jie.
Zhong Jie, Lakeville, present.
Zhong Jie, Lakeville, present. Zhong T.
Zhong T, St. Paul, present.
Zhong T, St. Paul, present. Yuwakim.
Yuwakim, St. Paul, present.
Yuwakim, St. Paul, present. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, St. Paul, present. Albright.
Albright, Bowabik, present.
Albright, Bowabik, present. Bernardi.
Bernardi, New Brighton, present.
Bernardi, New Brighton, present. Johnson. Johnson. Nash.
Nash. Nash, Waconia, present.
Nash, Waconia, present. Nelson M. Nelson M. Purcell. Purcell. Sauk.
Sauk, Rochester, present.
Sauk, Rochester, present. Sandine.
Sandine, Carlton County, present.
Sandine, Carlton County, present. Johnson. Johnson, St. Paul, present.
A quorum is present, and pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 2018, Section 3.073, I declare the House organized for this special session.
St. Paul, present.
Purcell.
Purcell.
Purcell, St. Paul, present.
Purcell, St. Paul, present.
Representative Winkler offers the following motion. The Clerk will report the motion.
Winkler moves that the Chief Clerk be and is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the Governor by message that the House of Representatives is now duly organized pursuant to law for this sixth special session.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker and members, this is the standard opening special session resolution, and I ask for a yes vote.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. Introduction of bills. The following House files have been offered for introduction today. The Chief Clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction and first reading of House Files 1 through 22.
First reading, House Files 1 through 22. There's a motion at the desk. The Clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Haley moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 19 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Haley.
Yes, Madam Speaker and members, that is my motion. Can I proceed? I couldn't tell if this was on, Madam Speaker, thank you. We have an urgency, Madam Speaker and members in the House, to reestablish the legitimate role of the legislature to help address this pandemic. On March 13th, the Governor declared a peacetime emergency. Part of the rationale and the reason that we have this in our Constitution for a peacetime emergency declaration is to allow the Governor new tools in his toolbox. Tools like rapid deployment of the National Guard, the ability to distribute aid, and to quickly access state resources and allocate emergency funds. My bill today is about restoring the tools in the toolbox that the legislature has to do our job. Before we begin, I want to be clear. COVID is a serious disease, and the state is in a serious situation right now with a surge in cases. My bill does nothing to diminish that. My bill is not about masks. I feel for every family that has been impacted, as has my family. I have had family members and extended family members get this disease. Some have been mildly sick and some have been critically sick in ICU. So I wanted to make that point first before I go into the details of my proposal. Today is November 12th, almost eight months to the day. And Minnesota is in the midst of the longest peacetime emergency in state's history. The Governor has had unprecedented powers and has left the legislature sometimes largely locked out of the process. While the Governor has had new tools in his toolbox via the ability to issue executive orders, the process the Governor has used has effectively taken away some of our power. Our tools to bring our constituent concerns to St. Paul and to problem solve and vet solutions have effectively been locked away for eight months. I am bringing forward legislation today that would give the legislature these additional tools and will hopefully improve communication and collaboration with the Governor. My bill is fairly straightforward. Similar to the current peacetime emergency, the Governor would retain the ability to issue executive orders that would have the full force of law for 30 days. After 30 days, the legislature would have the ability, but would not be required, to vote up or down on an individual executive order. We could rescind an executive order if we chose, or we could make changes that we deem necessary through our normal legislative lawmaking process. Right now, the problem is, the only way for us to end an executive order is to end the peacetime emergency altogether. This is not what I am trying to do. Many of the executive orders deal with licensing flexibility or streamlining processes that allowed our state agencies to continue to operate effectively during the pandemic. But there are some executive orders that are not working well for Minnesotans. We continue to hear every day from our constituents, our businesses, and our educators about their frustrations with certain executive orders. And yet we have no power to change them or to nuance the approach. We all want to do the right thing. We all care about the health and well-being of our family members, our neighbors, and all Minnesotans. Again, my bill does not change the current peacetime emergency declaration. The Governor still retains that and thus retains his ability to act on any urgency that may come before us in the coming months. But we need to plan, members. We need to plan going forward, and my goal today is very sincerely to bring some balance in power back between the relationship between the legislature and the Governor. My intention is to provide a path for us, an avenue for the legislature to have a stronger voice and to improve collaboration and communication with the Governor's office. We need to be working closely together to combat this pandemic. The current situation makes it difficult for us to communicate with our constituents who are begging us for more information and begging us to bring their insights and their concerns to the table before the next executive order is issued. We need to work with our businesses to help them stay afloat during what will be a difficult winter. We need our businesses and our schools and our constituents, again, to feel like their issues and their voice are being heard. That is our job. I've been working closely this week with Dave Baker, my colleague. We have been reaching out, making calls day and night to our colleagues across the aisle. I hope that has shown you how sincere we are in our effort with this proposal today. Our intention, again, is to have a respectful discussion today in the debate. I believe that Dave Baker was on his way here and might be stuck in some traffic. So I would like to be able to call on him to first discuss the impact of the executive orders on our hospitality industry. That is a major focus of what we want to discuss this afternoon. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to the discussion today.
The member from Candy Ojai, Representative Baker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and I want to thank Representative Haley for bringing this really well-thought-through Chapter 12 conversation about how we can kind of take this next step in helping our Governor under enormous pressure, to be able to make decisions as he is now, to be able to look at the science, to talk to businesses, to hopefully listen to a lot of people. And we can still allow him to do this, that we gave him the power to do. But 200-plus days later, after a lot of us know how the virus is moving, how it's not, what's working and what's not, we know a lot more today than we certainly did back in the dark days of March. And we are now entering likely some of the darkest days of this thing until we find a vaccine that we all hope is a few months away. I just want to say that to my colleagues that I have also been reaching over to for actually many months on different versions of how we can help our businesses. We are trying to have conversations with the Governor's Office and his Cabinet members to urge and really implore that things are really working well in these areas. The businesses are open safely. We are really concerned as the fall came upon us. Restaurants and eateries and bars and theaters and bowling alleys and such are entering a time where we can expand those a bit and to really work better on how we can make every environment safer. Then again, the numbers came, and that really is a challenge right now to talk about how we can really open up anything. And honestly, this is a really tough time for every business out there, especially in the hospitality business. Educators, I mean, we all see our friends and neighbors and communities really suffering. The reason I think that this bill is so important today and the reason I want to ask with all so much respect of my majority colleagues that are in the majority that have the ability to allow us to suspend the rules on this extremely reasonable offering, it allows the Governor to act just as he is today. He can move with. the governor to act just as he is today, he can move with quickness, he can move when something comes up. That has been something that my friends have said for a long time that you didn't support because he needs that authority to do so. This completely leaves that intact. Some of our members are saying, gee, Dave, this is actually a great bill, but we should go through the committee process. Yeah, you're right, we should. Right now, we can't really do that. The majority in the House hasn't had any committee meetings in the last several months, several weeks for obvious reasons. There was an election, everybody was tied up, we were in the middle of some things, but everything now is different. We know the election is over. It's time for us to legislate. We suspend the rules all the time right now on the floor during a horrible pandemic. This is nothing new. And I am just asking that today, when we look at some of the executive orders that are coming out, we don't know how they're going to work. Let's take the example of what's happening this week. Governor Walz has made some decisions about curfews and limiting groups and events from, again, wedding from 2:50 down to 50 in a matter of two weeks, removing the bar stools from lunch counters or bar seating even during the daytime needs to be removed. And so the problem that I'm seeing is, but I don't know yet because it actually hasn't been executed until this Friday. A bill like this that Representative Haley is bringing to us allows us to see if all of that executive order is working well, none of it is working well, or some of it is. And we have the ability then to go home and listen to our folks trying to keep people employed, trying to keep their customers safe and their staff, because some of these things actually are working pretty well. But it allows us, 134 members from every corner of the state of Minnesota, to listen to our businesses, to listen to our families, and then report back in this session, in these type of sessions, in these type of environments, that we can pass on what we're hearing. And then we can actually put it to a vote, and if we don't have enough votes, then, folks, nothing changes. But it gives us a chance to put a green or red button on our name and that we can say that we have told our colleagues our position in our districts, that that's really what we're all about here. So I'm just really asking for, if this is the real way we want to do business in St. Paul going forward during a pandemic, and you constantly want to make sure that we give the governor the power that he needs and the decisions-making process that he needs, then you should really like this bill. The members that have voted in favor of dropping all the peacetime emergency orders in the past several months should find this really easy to vote for and to support. I think your communities will find this as a very reasonable approach, and it keeps the thing at the forefront is making sure the governor has that ability to be nimble and he can move forward. But I do want to say that we have a moment today that if we delayed it, and if members want to stand up and say, this needs to go through the process, this needs to go through committees, we should wait till January because that's when our session will really begin, that's when our work will begin, these businesses cannot wait another two months for our voice to be heard in this setting. We just need to make sure time is money, time is business closures, time is what we, a lot of businesses don't have. And I know right now, every single member listening to this, we know people around us that are sick. We know people that are quarantined. Whether they've tested positive or not, we all know somebody right now, especially now. I've got three, four members of my hotel staff that are actually sick, and we are dealing with that, and we're taking good care of our other customers, and we're making sure our staffs have been healthy, and we have been wearing masks since back in April. We are diligent about that, but we cannot stop this spread. But ladies and gentlemen, my friends and the colleagues here, I just hope that you look at this as time is against us. If we waited for a couple more months, ah, we'll deal with it later, our businesses really can't. A lot of our businesses just can't wait. So I'm asking you to allow us to take this to a full vote today, to allow a very reasonable bill that Representative Haley brought to us, and I would wholeheartedly want to support. All the members that we've tried to reach out to, a lot of you said this is actually a pretty good idea. I really hope that we see a nice bipartisan approach, trying to actually get the work done now and trying to help our communities in Minnesota. So I thank you, members, for the time.
Representative Haley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to request a roll call.
Representative Haley requests a roll call. There are not 15 members in the chamber due to safety precautions today, so if you would like to raise your hand, please send an email to hands@house.mn. It's members only. It must be sent from your official account. There are 15 hands, so there will be a roll call. The member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members. Minnesota is setting daily records for new COVID cases. Our hospitals are running out of ICU beds, and our death count is rising. With all due respect, the urgency of this moment is not whether Republican politicians should have more ability to nitpick the governor's executive orders to help us.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
State your point of order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise to a point of order under Mason's Section 124, Number 3. It is not the person, but the measure that is subject to debate, and it is not allowable to, it is not allowable to arraign the motives of a member, but the nature or consequences of a measure. Now, I appreciate Representative Winkler wants to blame Republicans for COVID, but this measure before the body has nothing to do with that. As Representative Haley clearly stated, this really is about the governor working with the legislature, and we think that's entirely reasonable. So if Representative Winkler could keep his comments to the measure before the body, I think everyone would appreciate that.
Representative, I don't think that motives should be arraigned in either a member's speech or within the making of a point of order, and members should do well to not arraign motives of anyone, no matter what statements they're making on the House floor. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, no motives were impugned in my statement. The practical effect, if this bill became law, would be to provide more opportunity for Republican legislators to second-guess the governor's executive orders. So the question is not what your intention is, the question is, what is the effect of your policy and your actions? Minnesotans are reaping the whirlwind of a concerted campaign to undermine science, to question basic public health measures, and to turn this state's response to a pandemic into a political debate. We can't afford to continue this. The urgency that we face is for leaders of all parties to come together and say the same thing. COVID is deadly. We can take action to slow it down and control it. Minnesotans, through our own actions in following public health guidelines, have the power to slow and stop this, and the alarming and deadly surge that we are experiencing now is the result of people not following public health guidelines. COVID would exist regardless. The question is not whether people would get sick or die. The question is how many unnecessarily get sick or die because we are not providing the right level of leadership. We all know businesses that are failing. We all know renters that are behind. We know individuals and families who depend on unemployment because whole sectors of the economy have disappeared. Minnesota has limited tools to provide the massive level of economic assistance that is necessary to save our economy and to make sure that our businesses, our families, our renters aren't the ones suffering at the hands of this economic devastation. We need federal action, like we saw this summer, to prop up businesses, to prop up individuals, and to keep us going as we fight the pandemic. We need to be informed and take action and demand Congress help the states and act with President Trump to make sure that our people have the resources to get through with this. We don't have the economic power at the state level to borrow money and provide future inflation of a currency we don't control in order to get us through this difficult time. Only the federal government has that power. What we can do in Minnesota is use our public health authority to keep control of the pandemic and try to mitigate the worst of this experience. Other nations are doing a far better job of stepping up into protecting restaurants and the hospitality industry. Paying them to stay closed and save lives would be a much better way to approach this rather than hobbling through with partial openings and hoping these businesses can make it. We have a Republican Senate in Washington and a Republican president in Washington who could help, who could join Democrats in the U.S. House. If you want to help your small business, if you want to help your restaurants, if you want to help the people in your community survive economically, the best way to do that is to be in touch with your members of Congress and demand action. The governor is left with imperfect tools to deal with a devastating disease and a devastating economic attack on the basic livelihood of so many Minnesotans. The urgency that we face is not our ability to nitpick those executive powers of the governor. The urgency we face is a collective national action to fight the pandemic and save our economy. We would be far better off talking to Republican and Democratic members of Congress, newly-elected congressmen, making sure that our senators hear this message and demanding action from Washington now. This is a national emergency like we have not seen since the Great Depression and the Second World War. It is time that we act nationally, it is time that we act in unison, and it is time that all of us in all of our communities send the same message. Wear masks, stay home, practice social distancing. If you're exposed, quarantine yourself. If you need a test, get a test and stay away from other people. We will get through this with great difficulty. Very dark days are ahead, and what we need is unified action together. This motion today does not help us achieve anything. It simply provides greater leverage for the legislature, which has not shown itself in many cases to be up to the state of this emergency, to be involved in difficult decisions. I do hope that the Senate's action today in not taking up the motion to terminate the governor's emergency powers is a hopeful sign and a move in the right direction. And frankly, I think this bill is a sign of greater reasonableness, but it is not the way forward. The way forward is for all of us to send the same message, national action on the economy, local action to make sure that people are following public health guidelines, and moving forward together. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I asked for a no vote.
The member from Wabashaw, Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Representative Haley, for bringing the motion on the bill. While I appreciate the idea of bringing forward a motion to take a look at Section 12.31, which I believe is unconstitutional on its face, it's not, the underlying bill is not the idea of actually addressing the issue the way it needs to be addressed. The discussion here is very interesting. We're hearing again from Democrats about dark days ahead, or dark days are clearly here. Members, because of the work of President Trump and manufacturing companies across the country, next month, we are going to have a vaccine here in the United States that is supposed to be 90% effective. Good days are ahead. The people of this country and of this state will bring us out of the darkness that the Democrats and their big government solutions have brought forward as they turned out the lights on the freedom and opportunity of Minnesotans and businesses across our state. The question is, the governor wants Minnesotans to stop living, to stop doing the things we're supposed to do in life, that we experience in life. He brought forward an executive order last week. Again, members, these executive orders are written pure law with civil and criminal penalties attached to them if the people of Minnesota don't comply with them. He brought an executive order last week that writes a brand-new law that is going to take away two weeks of education for our kids on an annual basis from their schools. And that two weeks of education has been given to his cronies in the Education Minnesota Union. That's what we have here when we have the corruption of big government dictating the day, and we have a law in 12.31, that section, that is the accomplice. Now, certainly, past legislatures and governors in the construction of this law were unknowing in what they did. Courts have been overturning these laws, state by state, and federal courts are now acting, saying, these government shutdowns are unconstitutional. We're going to see more of those. We've got a case between, or a case in front of the Minnesota Appeals Court here in Minnesota continuing to work to bring the light of day on the unconstitutionality of this law and the governor's actions. So, members, rather than big government decisions that make the decision one-size-fits-all for every Minnesotan, telling them how to live their lives, we need to allow a free people who know best how to live their lives to make those decisions around the information that is widely available about this disease so that they can live in a way that best protects them and their family and best protects their freedom so that they can operate and continue to live, something that this governor seems to want to stop people from living. Members, full control by an uncontrolled monarch is failing us. The correlation, however, is clear. We've had many more one-size-fits-all executive orders carrying the full force and effect of law, pure law, written by the governor, that have come forward over the last eight months. Every single month, more and more unconstitutional dictates from this government governor are written. And each of the last several months, the severity of the coronavirus in this state has increased. The correlation is clear in Minnesota. The more government, the greater the problem. And, members, we want to allow this governor to create more of these pure laws, one-size-fits-all, dictating to people what to do. When the past shows us, the more of these that he writes, the worse the problem gets. Now, members, 12.31, and I made it clear in past discussions, violates Article 3 of the Minnesota Constitution, the non-delegation doctrine that says one branch of government shall not delegate its authority to another. Now, between 12.31 and the governor's activity, he has usurped the legislature's authority and powers. He's written over 80 different laws. And we also have in this law, 12.31, another unconstitutional reality, and that's the legislative veto. It's written right into 12.31. As a matter of fact, it says, legislature, if you don't like the pure laws with all their penalties that this governor is writing, legislature, you can veto them. That's what it says in 12.31. And, members, Representative Haley, while I like the spirit of what you're doing here in your bill, unfortunately, it only gives more validity to these unconstitutional realities and the behaviors that the governor is extracting from them. We are going to codify into law with this proposal even more of the unconstitutionality around the violation of Article 3 of the Minnesota Constitution, the non-delegation doctrine, the governor writing pure laws, and the upside-down legislative veto saying veto saying, "The governor writes laws, but then the legislature vetoes them." This is yet one more veto that would be written into 12.31. So, again, the spirit of it, Representative Haley, I think, is really good. We need to address this. We need to address 12.31. It is not a constitutional law, unfortunately, but this proposal makes it even less so. So, with that, members, I encourage a no vote on the proposal to bring this forward, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Scott, Representative Cantrell.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I wish to echo the sentiment of my colleague on the other side of the aisle, that indeed there are dark days ahead of us. Since September alone, in both Scott and Dakota County, we have seen the case rate per 10,000 residents more than triple. As of a week ago today, in one of the school districts in my area, there are over 100 staff members who are quarantined and over 400 students who are also in quarantine. Madam Speaker, members, this is an emergency unlike any that we have faced in modern times. And it is one that requires, with agility, the ability of the executive, not only in Minnesota, but in executive branches across the country, as well as our federal executive branch, to have the tools necessary to orient in real time to the ever-changing dynamics of this pandemic. Now, every state, except for one, has a peacetime emergency, and there's also a federal national declaration of emergency as well. And that is because regardless of the progress of a vaccine being produced, and the initial information, while promising, is not yet to the point where we can say, "Well, this pandemic is over." Because last that I heard, widespread availability of any prospective vaccine would not come to fruition until April at the latest. Meanwhile, we have seen, day over day, cases increase in our state. Today alone, there were over 7,200 COVID-19 cases in Minnesota, 39 new deaths, our second highest daily death rate. And these were reported today. The first highest death rate was yesterday. There were over 50 people dying from this horrible disease. COVID-19 has touched everyone's life. It has undoubtedly inflicted great pain upon people across the state of Minnesota, whether that be in terms of their health, in terms of their well-being, or in terms of their economic security. But, Madam Speaker and members, the nature and the reason for having a peacetime emergency, for the governor's peacetime emergency authority, is to ensure that he is able to make decisions that protect the health and well-being of Minnesotans across the state in a manner that is comprehensive and proportional to the severity of this pandemic without being influenced by political decisions. Now, we all know that in the legislature, the influence of political decisions is abundant. And also in the legislature, we know time and time again that action often takes a very long amount of time. So, Madam Speaker and members, we cannot undermine our state's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. We cannot put our fellow Minnesotans in jeopardy by undermining his peacetime emergency. And I will also say, Madam Speaker and members, that the governor is pursuing these executive orders under his peacetime emergency authority in consultation with the preeminent public health minds, both within our state and across the country. These are decisions that I know he does not take lightly. And I know that he is receptive to feedback from members of the legislature. And even before this motion before us was presented, the legislature has always had, and we maintain our ability to craft legislation in consultation with the executive branch, if we think that there's a better way to go about addressing the impacts of this pandemic or any other matters that affect the people of Minnesota. So, in closing, Madam Speaker, we are at the precipice of the darkest days that our state likely will have faced in modern times. And we owe it to our healthcare providers, our frontline workers. We owe it to everyone who is in harm's way to make sure that in no manner do we undermine the effectiveness of our executive branch's ability to keep as many people safe and alive as possible during this crisis. Madam Speaker and members, I urge a no vote on the motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Anoka, Representative Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Haley, for bringing this reasonable bill to us today. And I want to address the issue of education here, and it's a really serious matter. And so, there are just some bullet points that I am begging the governor to consider. Number one, work with the legislature in setting the school policy. Parents are frustrated and feeling that they do not have a voice. The hands of both their state-elected officials and their school board members are tied, and parents feel frustrated and unheard. I heard this morning, just this morning, from a mom in my district. She says, "Good morning. I'm concerned, mother, who has a seventh-grader with ADHD in the Anoka-Hennepin School District, and I wanted to forward on an email I sent to the social worker at his school yesterday. I am pleading to anyone in a position of power to please put our kids back in school. Not only is it detrimental to their education, but they need socialization structure and consistency of a daily routine within school. I am a parent who is done with distance learning because it is causing my son to fall into a deep depression because he is not getting the extra help and resources he needs to be successful. I am done watching him struggle, cry, and get physically ill on a daily basis because of how stressed he is and how overwhelming school has become for him. He used to love school and now hates it and calls himself, quote-unquote, "retarded" because he does not process information the same way others do. My heart breaks for him every day, and watching him retreat into himself and not talk to anybody and hide in his room every day is bringing so much stress to us as a family. Until he is able to get the help he needs and should be getting from this district and the state, I will not be forcing him to do any more work than he is capable of." There is a group, I represent the largest school district in the state of Minnesota in Anoka-Hennepin. There's a large group of over 5,500 parents who have organized, and they're very concerned about their kids, just as this parent was. I believe we, as legislators, are essential, and we ask that we be treated as such to carry out our constitutional duties for our constituents. My second bullet point to the governor is to be more transparent on how decisions for the type of learning our schools should use were made. I believe that if this information was more transparent and parents had a better understanding of how the decisions were made, they might be better understanding and understand the reasons for transitioning from in-school to hybrid to completely all online. Thirdly, provide to the public any risk assessments that were done that weighed harm to students, the harm to students of not being in school, to the transmission of the virus. I don't know of any risk assessments that have been made public if the risk assessments have been done. For instance, did you know that research shows that as little as missing five days of school a year can cause a 3% drop in standardized tests for third graders? Multiply that by how many days our kids have missed. That was a study out of Maryland for just five snow days out of the school year. Did you know that middle-school students may have lower rates of educational attainment of their learning if their learning is disrupted during key periods of development? Did you know that following the shutdown of many schools in 1916 in the midst of the polio outbreak, researchers found that younger students eventually returned to school while working-age students lived in communities with more cases of polio, eventually completed fewer years of schooling? Students aged 14 to 17 during the pandemic then had less educational attainment in 1940 compared to their slightly older peers. So, what we're looking at on the horizon here, I read a recent article in USA Today that says, "Look forward to higher dropout rates from our students because they're disengaged now, and they're not going to have a good reason to go back to being engaged in school." Here's another test case. Test scores in Thailand fell in the year after severe flooding in 2011, which forced the closure of schools in some of its provinces for close to a month. The losses were most prominent in younger students. And here's a really good study done in Argentina. In the early 1980s, they suffered through a wave of teacher strikes that caused students to lose an average of 88 school days. The strikes caused a decline in high school and college completion rates, as well as lower unemployment rates and earnings. A 2017 study found that 30- to 40-year-olds who lived through those strikes in Argentina earned 3% less than they would have otherwise, and this amounted to an annual loss of more than $700 million to the Argentinian economy. So, let's look at some risk assessments. If they've been done, can the public please see them, Mr. Governor? The next bullet point has to do with our superintendents. Please provide the superintendents data-driven guidance so that they can make the best decisions at the local level. They need this guidance to be covered from a legal standpoint. Our superintendents are extremely frustrated right now. They want to do the right thing by our kids and their teachers, but they don't have the data-driven guidance needed from the state of Minnesota. And finally, Mr. Governor, reexamine the education guidance given regarding the 14-day quarantine for those exposed to the virus. This is causing most school districts to call off even hybrid learning due to staffing shortages. Even the healthcare industry does not have the stringent of quarantine guidelines. So, please look at these items, Mr. Governor. And again, I would like to thank Representative Haley for bringing this bill. And please consider these things, folks. We have to know whether calling off school is more detrimental to our kids and puts them at greater risk than the actual outcomes of this virus. Thank you, members.
The member from Henepin, Representative Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, we just celebrated Veterans Day yesterday, a day to honor those who have served our nation in the armed forces. I'm proud of the people in my family that have served, my husband, my father, my father-in-law, my brother-in-law, both my grandfathers. The sacrifices that they and all veterans have made should be humbling to us all. The notions of sacrifice and service to others are intrinsic to the people that serve in our armed forces. Their careers are built around working for a cause larger than themselves, for the common good, and for the safety and security of the American people. My grandfathers both fought in World War II, as most young men of their generation did. It was a painful, devastating war, but it was fought for the very American ideals of freedom from tyranny and freedom from fascism. My grandfathers and many of your family members fought because they believed it was worth it to fight for the good of the whole. They knew we were stronger together because they lived it. Today, we face many challenges. Our most immediate and obvious challenge across Minnesota, across the United States, and indeed across the world, is the COVID-19 pandemic. Everyone here has seen the numbers. We are experiencing a surge in cases, a surge in rates of positivity, which indicates widespread and uncontrolled community spread, and a surge in deaths, with a record 56 Minnesotans dying of COVID-19 yesterday. Our hospitals, our doctors and nurses, and our frontline essential hospital staff are warning us about the precariousness of the situation. They are begging for measures to slow the spread of the virus. We're seeing unrelenting broad community spread with almost daily records for new case growth and hospitalizations. Without immediate new mitigation measures, we will see continued exponential increases in cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Metro hospitals are nearing capacity. Non-ICU beds are regularly above 95% capacity, and ICU beds are above 90%. Staffing needs have reached a crisis point. Even if we have the beds, we don't have the staff to care for patients because they are either sick or quarantining because of exposure to a positive person, and most of these are from community spread. We must change our behavior, or we will needlessly lose more Minnesotans to COVID and to non-COVID illnesses and injuries because our overwhelmed healthcare system will not have the capacity to care for them. Members, just like states across the country, we are in a state of emergency. None of us wants to be. We're all tired of COVID, but this is the reality that we face. To pretend otherwise is dangerous and puts our people at further risk. Now is the time to pull together and to make sacrifices together, just as previous generations have done in times of crisis. Members, we must stand together as leaders with a unified message about public health. Wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, don't gather in large groups. This is not the moment to remove the state of emergency. We are entering an extremely dangerous moment in the pandemic. There is hope on the horizon. There is promising news about the progress being made toward an effective vaccine. A vaccine is likely coming, but it is not here yet, and a vaccine alone will not solve the COVID crisis. We must pull together for this final push, just as previous generations did in the face of national crisis. Let's work together toward our common goal and keep our eyes on the prize, the defeat of COVID and the recovery of our economy. Let's make our grandparents proud and live up to their example. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Dakota, Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, members, thank you to Representative Haley and Baker for their work on this proposal. It's the sort of thoughtful, pragmatic approach that we're going to need, not only to address the problems of COVID, but also the large budget deficit, as well as the public safety crisis that we are facing in the city of Minneapolis. If there's one thing that members take away from today's discussion, I hope that members on both sides of the aisle are seeing, that we are going to have to work together to address all these problems. And this pragmatism and reasonableness is something we need to see more of, not less. Members, I would ask you to please, at some point, either before this vote or after, make a point of going out and reading Governor Walz's Emergency Executive Order 2096. The descriptions in the media have been accurate. However, it is important for members to read and understand what is an increasingly dangerous scope of power in terms of government regulating the activities of individuals in their homes and private gatherings. The governor is criminalizing activity that goes above and beyond our public health concerns, and I would just encourage members to please read that order. In short, finally, members, it's important to remember that COVID is a behaviorally-spread disease. What we individually do and don't do is going to affect how much this virus is spread, and how many hospitalizations there are, how many deaths there are. No one knows when we will see advanced therapies taking place. No one knows when we are going to be seeing a vaccine that is 90% effective. There are studies, there are hopes. No one knows when we will see advanced therapies taking place. No one knows when we are going to be seeing a vaccine that is 90% effective. There are studies, there are hopes, but we will not know these things for quite some time. But what we do know is, in the short term, how we individually behave has a big impact on this, and how we work together as legislators has an even bigger impact. So please, members, whether you're DFL or Republican, listen to those voices on the other side of the aisle that are interested in working with you. Nothing's going to happen this upcoming session unless there's bipartisan compromise and agreement, and you're better served by listening to those who are seeking agreement than those who are not. So again, thank you, Representative Haley and Baker. I'll be voting yes on this resolution and would encourage members to do the same. Thank you.
The member from Dakota, Representative Mann.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members. I would like to speak to you today not as a politician, which I will soon no longer be, yay, but as a frontline healthcare provider. And I want to start off by saying that we are not okay. We are struggling to take care of you. We are struggling to take care of your family. Generally, when I walk into the ER, there's about 20% to 30% of patients that have this yellow light next to their name, indicating that they either have COVID-19 or they potentially have it. My last ER shift, I walked into a full ER where every single patient, except for one, had a yellow light by their name. Our ERs are full. Our hospitals are full. In Rochester alone, COVID-19 hospitalizations have tripled in the last two weeks. And I want to share with you conversations I've had or I've heard regarding this in the last couple of weeks. And they're just excerpts of conversation, so you can imagine what the remainder of the conversation looks like. If we can't find this patient a bed for his surgery, then we will do what we have to to save his life by doing an emergency, high-risk surgery at our rural hospital that we have no business of doing. It's either that or he goes home to die. Another similar excerpt. But if we don't find a bed, then what? She goes home to die? Well, yes. I watched a physician sob after she told the wife of a dying patient that her husband of 65 years would not leave the ER alive. I watched as a son ask one of our nurses if she could go into his dad's room and put her hand on his shoulder and tell his dad that he loved him as this patient died alone because his son also had COVID-19. You can swear up and down that COVID-19 is not a big deal, that it's mild, that it is not worth your personal freedom. You are wrong. You will know that you are wrong when, because of COVID-19, your child will have to wait in the ER, writhing in pain for six hours because of a broken leg. You will know that you are wrong when your spouse has to wait to be seen while having an asthma attack. You will know that you are wrong when your brother or your sister is faced with waiting eight hours for an urgent abdominal surgery. And you will know that you are wrong when someone you love has COVID-19 and there is no medical staff left to take care of them. Now, I know that science has historically not been the forte of several health members, but correlation is not causation. We are doing far better than many states, most of which have not done anything, haven't even done something so simple as a mask mandate. And one of those states now, North Dakota, is at a crossroads, and they are allowing COVID-19-positive nurses to take care of COVID-19 patients because so many people are sick and their healthcare system is completely overwhelmed. I ask you, is that where you want Minnesota to be? Because that's where we are headed. The Mayo Clinic, as a national system, has over 1,000 staff members not working because of COVID-19, and the vast majority of them came into contact with the virus out in the community. We are not okay. This isn't even a question about whether or not we are in a state of emergency because, unfortunately, we are more than ever in a state of emergency. And instead of focusing on that, instead of working together, which we have every opportunity to do, to work together to make sure that people won't get addicted, to do things like extend the availability of using your insurance without new deductibles in 2021 so we can push back elective procedures, to make sure that healthcare workers have enough PPE, which, once again, we don't, to make sure that we are providing continued relief to those who have lost their jobs, we are having this ridiculous conversation again about how much power the governor has and how it personally hurts your feelings. We have staff in this building who have family who died. We have staff in this building who have families in the hospital today, and yet several of you still don't have the decency to put on a mask, the simplest act of humanity towards someone else, and it's too much to ask. Well, I will tell you that recently, a letter has gone to the governor from over 400 healthcare providers in the state of Minnesota, asking for more restrictions because we can't keep up. We can't keep doing this if everyone doesn't pitch in. For example, Representative Scott, you gave great examples about why your kids should be in school, and I 100% agree with you. And yet, what have we done to keep those numbers down? We allowed youth sports to continue, making masks optional in those circumstances. We have allowed in-person dining despite the fact that this is one of the most common places to get COVID-19. We can't have it both ways. So I am urging you today, I am begging you today, to focus on what's important. We need to fight for the whole because, as individuals, we will not get out of this. The healthcare providers in Minnesota are begging you to stay at home and take this as an emergency and take it seriously. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Dakota, Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. Must be Dakota section. I think every member's spoken from here. But, members, I speak to support Representative Haley's approach. It's an approach to reexert our legislative responsibility and the voice of our constituents. Representative Winkler is astute that this is a sign of greater reasonableness. However, he is also incorrect. This bill is not an opportunity or a way for us to nitpick the governor's decisions. Rather, this is an opportunity to partner with each other and the governor to make better decisions together. Members, the recent election is an opportunity to reset the working relationship of the legislature and to work with the governor. And, Madam Speaker, with respect, I suggest that you might form a small working group to examine the Chapter 12 emergency powers that we've debated almost on a monthly basis for the last eight months. And perhaps the original author of that section, Representative Plousky, could even chair the working group and provide some good knowledge and direction for us. And I would also suggest that we turn down the partisan rhetoric and accept the reality that Minnesotans have spoken, and they want our state leaders, us, to represent them and to work together to manage the serious public health concern. And so, members, again, this is an opportunity to reexert our legislative responsibility and to be the voice our constituents have just elected us to be. So thank you, Representative Haley, and I will be voting yes. Thank you.
The member from Olmsted, Representative Liebling.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members. Well, I was afraid I was going to have to follow Representative Mann directly, and if that was the case, I was going to say that there was nothing more to add. But I think it is important to, just to say a few words more about this. She put forward very well the kind of crisis that we're in, and that was something that I also wanted to emphasize. This is not only about COVID-19 as such, as horrible as a disease as it is and how difficult this is to control. This is really about every Minnesotan. It's about, as she put it so well, this is about if you have appendicitis, will there be a bed for you? Because we are truly at a crisis. So that is so important to say. And, members, we've had record-setting daily cases, and I want you to know that today, the Department of Health is reporting 7,228 new cases of COVID-19, which is substantially higher than any other day, and we've been breaking records day after day. So we are in a critical, critical situation. I do want to go back and just address a few of the things that I've heard today. I do appreciate that the current bill is a step forward for the Republican minority. It is. It does indicate some acknowledgement that you can't just pull the governor's emergency powers away and that this is a real emergency. And I'm so glad we're at that place because I think it's been said by many, the leadership of every single member matters here, the message that you are giving your constituents about the seriousness of this. If we could do that, that would go a long way because there are still people out there who are listening to the voices that say this doesn't matter, this isn't serious, it's not worth wearing that mask. And we need everyone to join hands and give the message that this is serious and that our individual behavior really does matter, as Representative Garofalo put it, that this is an individually-spread disease, and we all have responsibility. But I do think that the bill that's before us today is not the right solution. Again, and I think this has been said, I think I've said this before on the House floor, I do think we should look at the Chapter 12 law because it clearly was not written for this situation. But I do not agree that the legislature should come in and individually try to overturn or debate overturning individual public health decisions that the governor is making. Because the nature of our body, the nature of legislators, is we are a political body. That is not a bad thing. That is the way we are constructed. We are made for there to be a debate about the direction of our state. But when it comes to public health matters, when it comes to decisions in an emergency that have to be made, that by their very nature are not going to be popular, I do not think it would be appropriate or helpful for this legislature to debate those individual decisions and bring politics even more into this than it has been. And that's my fear if we were to pass this bill and change the way this is done in the way that Representative Haley has proposed. So I was really curious, when Representative Haley introduced this, to hear exactly what was being talked about here, and Representative Baker did flesh that out quite a bit. And I heard him say a couple of things that I thought were actually very troubling. And, you know, let me just back up and say, as others have, we all get that this is terrible. This pandemic is terrible. This whole situation is terrible for every single person in the state. It's terrible for the businesses. It's terrible for the schoolchildren. It's terrible for the parents. It's a terrible time to be a teacher, a parent, a student. It's a terrible time to be a legislator because we have this, we are also in this situation, as I've heard in many of your voices, that we feel powerless, and at the same time, we feel that our constituents want answers. And you know what? It's also a terrible time to be a governor. It's a terrible time, folks. It is terrible. There are no good answers, and there are no easy answers. But what I heard from Representative Baker was that he's focused on the businesses. He says, "Businesses can't wait till January." He said, and he said, and I wrote this down, "We are diligent," meaning that I think he meant the restaurant and hospitality industry, "but we cannot stop this spread." And what that says to me is that there's a focus on the business side, that there's a belief here, and I don't know, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but if people are thinking that there's, "We can't stop this thing, so just let it run wild," or "let us try individually to deal with it, let us just, everyone, kind of figure it out your on your own," that doesn't work. We've seen that happen in other states, and we've seen that people need clear direction. You know, we hope that we don't need, you know, God help us, we don't want, you know, people going, inspectors going into people's Thanksgiving celebrations, but we need a clear message to our population that this is what we must do to keep all of us safe. And it's not about whether, only about whether you or your relative catch COVID, it's whether there's going to be a hospital bed available when grandpa has that heart attack. That's what this is about, for every single person in this state. So I just think that this, while I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the attempt to come to more solutions, and I would like to work with more of you, and I do think we should continue to think about how this is structured and how we can do better next time, or continuing, if we have to continue for very much longer, how we can do it better. I don't think the solution in front of us is the right one. And so I'm urging members to vote no, but I sure would like us, at this point, to pledge to each other that we will give Minnesotans the same message, and that is, please, please take these directions seriously. This is not about anybody wanting to cut off anybody's freedom. The only freedom we want to cut off is the freedom of that virus to go from person to person to person in an uncontrolled way. Because that is going to kill our economy whether or not there are restrictions. It's killing the economy in the whole country. It's killing the economy where there aren't restrictions. That we cannot afford. We cannot afford to allow the virus the freedom to go where it wants. So please, whether you think the governor is too heavy-handed or not, please, let's give all of our constituents the same message, that this is deadly serious, and we're depending on you to make the small sacrifices. For some people, it's a huge sacrifice, as we're hearing from Representative Mann. We know our healthcare providers are making enormous sacrifices, as are many other people. These sacrifices are not equal across the state, but wearing a mask is the very, very least thing people can do. Social distancing, when you can, is a minor inconvenience compared to what is happening and what could be happening. So please, people, I urge you to take those steps, and let's get this thing under control as best we can. And with that, Madam Speaker, I urge members to vote no on the resolution. Thank you.
The member from right, Representative McDonald. We can hear you, Representative McDonald.
Very good. I rise to support Representative Haley's resolution. Well, actually, I'm sitting right now, but that's beside the point. You know, I've heard from the other side that we don't take this seriously, that we aren't wearing masks, that we're not doing our part, and I reject that. I think that's a very unfair statement and certainly is not true. I've been all over the state in the last four or five months, and people are abiding by the CDC guidelines and the MDH guidelines. People are wearing masks. People are taking this seriously. People are doing their best. We have trusted our individuals and our families to do what is best. That is exactly why we need this resolution. Representative Winkler said we need to do this collaborative, both nationally and statewide. Really? Well, if that's the case, Representative Winkler, then perhaps that the legislature Well, if that's the case, Representative Winkler, then perhaps that the legislature should have a say in some of the executive orders that are affecting all parts of our life. It is a very troubling times, but when you've got executive orders that are affecting our lives within our own households, telling us as families that we can't meet more than 10 people or more than three individual families together, and yet us as representatives have no say in that, I tell you what, my folks in this Wright County are not very pleased with that, that edict whatsoever, and that is exactly why we need this resolution, so we can all be a part of the solution. The governor has not consulted anything, anybody in the hospitality industry when it comes to affecting their businesses, nor in the education committee. I've heard from several of our superintendents and principals that are very disturbed and very upset about the latest, well, his last executive order, making it even more difficult for teachers and administrators and students to both learn distantly and in person. He has not consulted any one of us, and it is a surprise that he hasn't consulted any Republicans. As a matter of fact, if I have to remind the body, and perhaps on the campaign trail, we say things that are, that we don't mean, but I hope the governor didn't mean this, but he said just in Stillwater, a couple of, well, three weeks ago, that he, the governor, well, said, "We don't disagree with Republicans because they're Republicans, we disagree with them, Republicans, because they're wrong every damn time." Oh, really, Mr. Governor? Isn't that clever? How insulting. Have you been wrong on some of your models? Have you been wrong with the $7 million mortgage? Have you been wrong with the 27,000 dead by July 16th? Have you been wrong with the rioting and the looting and the, you know, the days that went on without standing in the National Guard? You know, it's not very polite to tell people they're wrong, and I must apologize for doing so, but Governor, you were wrong in this, and that statement that you put out, very wrong. Perhaps that we can all work together, and that is why Representative Haley has this bill, that we work together and have a voice for every person within our state. I'd like to ask you if Representative Fabian would yield to a question.
Representative Fabian, will you yield to a question from Representative McDonald?
I will yield, yes, ma'am.
He will yield, Representative McDonald.
Madam Speaker, I just want to make a point from some of the comments on our friends on the other side. Representative Fabian, in your district in Roseau, one of the furthest ways from the, from the center of the universe here in St. Paul, do you see people that are very polite, very abiding by the guidelines that have our Minnesota Department of Health, you know, respecting the social distancing, wearing masks, being very careful, washing your hands? Do you see that in your neck of the woods?
Representative Fabian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative McDonald, yes, we see that every day.
Representative McDonald.
Madam Speaker, would Representative Becker please yield?
Representative Becker, will you yield for a question?
I, I would yield for a question, yes.
He will yield, Representative McDonald.
Representative Becker, you are at the elbow of Minnesota, as you always state there on the north side, the elbow that sticks out in the state map. In your neck of the woods, do you see people that have taken this very seriously, that are wearing masks in public gatherings, are practicing social distancing, are very cognitive of people's fears and anxieties and seriousness of the situation?
Representative Becker.
Madam, Madam Speaker and Representative McDonald, yes, I do. Some of you know I volunteer as an EMT, so I'm called in some difficult situations, and we're seeing even in those situations, people are very respectful of us as EMTs and coming to assist them, even though we're, we're on that hump, bump, tip, elbow, nose, right next to South Dakota, we are treating people with great respect, the constituents, and I'm very proud of them, even though they may not like everything that comes down the pipe, they do understand, they have the common sense to say, hey, I'm going to treat our neighbors like I want to be treated. And you know what? You don't need an executive order, that's just instilled in you. So thanks for that question, Representative.
Representative McDonald.
Madam Speaker, I'll go to the south a little bit. Representative David, if he's on, would he be able to yield for a question?
He will yield, Representative McDonald.
Representative David, you're up there in Lanesboro and Preston, the down-southern, southern Minnesota beautiful area. Do you see your friends, family, constituents that have taken this seriously, that are wearing masks and practicing social distancing and being very cognitive and respectful to each other in regarding to the virus?
Representative David.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In District 20B, we are extremely compliant, we always have been, we always will be, and with the rise in cases, it just shows that the governor's orders have not worked, and they have failed miserably.
Representative McDonald.
Madam Speaker, so our friends on the other side, would you please stop with the rhetoric and quit lying and, and indicate in your statements that we don't take this seriously, and that we don't believe mask mandates, of course, they don't, they haven't mounted the hill of beans the last three months, they haven't made one hill of difference, but would you please quit making those statements that we don't take this seriously, and that we're, we think it's just oh, ho, hum? That is a bunch of nonsense, and it's insulting. I thought we were a little bit above that. It, it's just unacceptable. People are taking this seriously. We've all had family members, well, I shouldn't say we all, I don't want to speak for anybody, I personally have had family members, my mother had it, 84 years old, she had it several months ago, feeling, no, not so good for about three, four days, and then she was fine, praise be to God. And two aunts, the McDonald nuns, you know some of them, some of those in the chambers, my four aunts that are nuns, the McDonald sisters, two of them got it, 92 years old, 96, they didn't even know they had it, and yet they recovered. Everything with you is doom and gloom, there are some doom and gloom times, yes, but there's some great things ahead, too. Pfizer announced 90% accuracy on a, on a vaccine, and yet some of you say, well, supposedly it's coming, we don't know. Well, maybe you don't know, but Pfizer knows. Absolutely, they know. 99.7% recovery rate, and the mortality rate continues to drop. The medicines to, for those to recover are becoming even more advanced, even those with serious illnesses are recovering. You know, we have to stay positive, we can't all just always doom and doom, Debbie Downer, we have to look at the positive things and the compassionate things that we're doing. I haven't witnessed anyone in Minnesota, and not that I'm just in my Wright County bubble, I, I get out as a photographer, I've traveled all over the state in the last six months, that people are serious, they're caring, they're compassionate, they're praying, and they're doing their part to do the best. At the other end, we have to fight with also businesses and schools. We have to make sure that the businesses are viable when we get out of this pandemic. We have to make sure that our schoolchildren are not, continue to experience loneliness and depression and the suicide rate, and the, it's horrible. We got to do everything, we all got to work together to make sure that we can get out of this whole wholesome and moral and compassionate and tender. But we can't do it if one governor just continues to make executive order after executive order after executive order, without seeking the guidance of the state legislature who was hired and elected by the people of Minnesota. From what I gather, he hasn't even been discussing with our educational leaders, other than MDH, and our hospitality groups. If we're all in this together, if we're all Minnesota one, then we must all work together in this, and this is why this amendment, this resolution is very important. And I suppose none of you are going to change your minds, my friends on the DFL, but it would behoove you to do so, if you really believe that we should collaboratively and effortless work together in efforts to get over this, and to hopefully, not hopefully, we will get through this together. So vote for this resolution, we can all have a say in coming out this together. Good day.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Yuakim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, Representative Yuakim, proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's spoken on the floor today. I respect all of you as my colleagues. This is a tough time to be a decision maker. I especially would like to thank Representative Morrison and Representative Mann for being, bringing their firsthand medical experiences to the floor. Their words are so important for us to hear today, ground us in the reality that we are facing, and how important it is that we take this pandemic seriously if we're going to get through this together. But part of taking that seriously is not to say that masks haven't made a hill of beans of difference over the last few months on the House floor. I also want to thank, speaking of schools, as Education Policy Chair, I want to thank our teachers, parents, school counselors, social workers, nurses, nutrition folks, bus drivers, administrators, and school board members for all the work they're doing under incredible circumstances during a global pandemic. Their dedication to our scholars is above reproach. And I would like to thank our students and the parents and the care, their caretakers for all the adjustments they've had to make. My heart goes out to families, this is not easy for anyone, and we all want what is best for our students and our communities. They are our future in so many ways. This summer, the House Education Finance and Policy Committees held three committee hearings to hear from all the folks that I've mentioned above, to hear about the challenges and opportunities they face as we pivoted to distance learning in the spring, and what their hopes were for the fall. Those conversations have been ongoing, and they will continue. And I do know that MDE has had those conversations all over the state as well, weekly meetings with our superintendents and the commissioner, constant communication and opportunities for input. In August, the executive order allowed the flexibility needed for our schools to make the decision in their own areas. They have been working with the districts ever since to address their concerns. MTH and county health officials have also been a resource for our schools when they're making these tough decisions, because their schools don't have epidemiologists on staff. They need the support to make these crucial decisions for their schools. And I will repeat what we have heard from health experts and on this floor today, it is so important for folks to wear masks, socially distance, stay away from large groups, so that we can stop community spread. That is what's going to help keep our students in-person and in hybrid learning in our school. Adults need to start acting like adults. Just like our hospitals are begging for folks to take these guidelines seriously, our teachers are as well. They want to be in school with their students more than anything else, trust me. I hear it at home every day, as the daughter of a retired teacher, as a wife of a veteran teacher, as the mother of a new teacher, and a sister-in-law to poor other teachers, I hear how badly they want to be in-person with their students, but they also want to make sure it's safe for everyone in that building as well. I agree that our students do better when they're in school. We have spent the last two years in the House Education Policy Committee talking about students' mental health, social-emotional learning, non-exclusionary discipline, as well as full-service community schools. We had bills to support and fund all of those initiatives, and frankly, I was disappointed not to find partners across the aisle to get them across the finish line. To last, I am trying to be an optimist and find some bright spots during a global pandemic. We now have factual examples about how important our E-12 system and childcare system is to making our economy run. We are hearing from both sides of the eye how essential our teachers and school staffs are in our students' lives. Even if the aisle don't fully believe they need the proper tools to do their jobs, we're finally coming together to respect their profession. That, that makes me hopeful, and I'm hopeful that I will now find partners across the aisle to work on the education issues like full-service community schools, mental health support, social-emotional learning, non-exclusionary discipline, and many more programs that have been proven to support our students and close our opportunity gaps. Because you see, before COVID, our school system was not working for all of our students. It was not living up to being the great equalizer that it should be. COVID has shown a harsh outlook on many of our systems that are not working for all Minnesotans. And maybe, this maybe, we're all paying a little bit of attention now. With that, I urge members to vote no on this resolution, so we can move forward together when session starts in January, and tackle some of these important issues for all of Minnesota. Thank you.
The member from Meeker, Representative Erdahl.
Madam, Madam Speaker and members, I, I think that my friends on the other side of the aisle might be missing the point just a little bit. We are not minimizing the impact of the pandemic. We are, we are not asking today to rescind an order. In fact, this doesn't change one order in light of the crisis, it doesn't undermine anything. We're not asking to end anything. We understand this is a critical time. Representative Haley's bill simply says that going forward, we should have positive collaboration between the government, between the governor and the legislature. We'll be in session soon. All this says is that as executive orders are issued, that within 30 days, we should be able to work together to continue them, or not. Not all orders, but individual ones. We cannot surrender our legislative authority. A cynic might say that to do so brings into question the need to have a legislative branch at all, just let the governor act. Are we suggesting that in times of crisis, we don't need the legislature? Let's put reason over partisanship. We're not asking today to rescind anything just to work together in the best interests of the people of Minnesota. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Davney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I want kids back in school in person. You want kids back in school in person. And as Chair Yuakim just spoke to, teachers painfully miss their students in regular contact with them. But even more than that, we want our kids, school staff, their families, and our communities safe and healthy. That's what's best for our students, for our schools, and our state. I'm with Representative McDonald. I want to remain positive, but the best way to remain positive is to make sure that as few Minnesotans test positive for the COVID-19 virus as possible. Earlier speakers had asked for a data model for school decision-making. I'd urge those members to look at the state's Safe Learning Plan from MDE, because it's exactly what they're asking for. It's a data-driven model for school districts that leaves the local decision-makers, school administrators, and school boards in charge. It was developed to have districts and charter schools choose their initial models last summer, based on the county case numbers, but then refer to more localized factors like confirmed cases, community spread, quarantining, and close contacts in their school community, and each school building within their district or charter school, to make decisions when deciding how to change their learning model as they progress through the year. I would suggest, in my own county, in Hennepin County, that the experience of the virus in Wayzata and their public schools is different than it is in Ridgefield and their public schools, and that those decision-makers on the local level should use data and make their decisions, exactly the authority that they have, and exactly the support to exercise that that they receive from the Minnesota Department of Education. In fact, the overwhelming number of districts in Minnesota and schools have chosen not to change their learning model that they chose last summer. 537 local schools and districts, and 378 of them have stayed in the same learning mode. 32 have loosened up their, the model that they're working in, because the local conditions have allowed for them to make that decision. 115 schools and districts have chosen to tighten restrictions to better protect the health and lives of students, staff, families, and community, because they have the authority under the Safe Learning Plan to do that. Regional support teams from MDE have been working hard to ensure that schools and districts are employing the best learning model for everyone in the, in the district and community, while also dealing with the unique challenges and resources that each of our Minnesota counties have offered to help fight this pandemic at the county level. Members, we're all tired of this pandemic. The fatigue is real. Minnesota remains better positioned than its neighboring states, but we're still have very difficult times ahead. I'd urge you to hear particularly the voices of Representatives Morrison and Mann. The insights and the frontline experiences that they were able to share are powerful. The ultimate accountability right now is not with the governor, and is not with the legislature, but it's with a microscopic virus that spreads through the air. We dare not get it wrong just because it's hard. I urge you to vote no on the Haley resolution. Thank you.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Munson.
Thank you, Madam Speakers, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I, I rise today against the Haley mo, the, as Representative Raskowski mentioned earlier, this, this bill, the law as is violates our, our constitution by delegating our responsibility for our constitution by delegating our responsibility for the governor, to the governor, to, to write law. I, I commend both Representatives Haley and Baker for wanting to change 1231 so that the legislature can be involved, but this bill doesn't do that. This bill doesn't engage, doesn't bring us to the table, doesn't, doesn't give the people a voice in the laws in Minnesota. All it does is allow us to bring up a resolution, just like we have been doing to end the peacetime emergency, but to bring up a resolution to end a specific executive order, a specific law that the governor has written without including the legislature. He's written 96 such orders so far, and we've been unable to stop any of them. We've talked about how hurtful some of them are, but it doesn't engage us. It just allows us to veto this provision, and it doesn't, it doesn't mean that each of the executive orders that come forward, if we were to challenge one, that we would be forced to vote on it and, and forced to have a majority approve it. We would have to veto them. And that means that a majority in, in both the House and the Senate would both have to veto these. And of course, we would have to bring forward a resolution in the minority and require 90 votes, this overwhelming supermajority, to just bring forward a resolution to end one executive order. It doesn't bring us to the table. It doesn't allow us to improve these laws. It, it, laws should be difficult to become, it should be difficult for something to become law. That's why we have committees. That's why we include the voice of all the people in Minnesota through representation in this body to make things better and then send it to the governor where he can sign it or veto it. This, this, this bill today basically throws the towel in and says, we think the peacetime emergency should just be with us forever, and the governor should retain these powers forever. And this is trying to get some crumbs in, in the lawmaking process, but it's not right. It's unconstitutional. We need to actually change 1231 by requiring the legislature to positively affirm in both bodies anything that the governor were to write under an emergency order like this and, and not, not, not to codify this legislative veto, which the US Supreme Court has found to be unconstitutional and that many other states have thrown out their emergency powers for the governor on the same grounds. I'm voting no today because this is not the right way to do this. And I hope that, you know, others that are talking about the virus and masks and, and our actions around COVID understands that we should not be writing legislation that is unconstitutional. You talk about working together, you talk about wanting to collaborate and stuff, this bill doesn't do that. And that's why we should be voting to, to change this, this law in a different manner. And by the way, the Senate has already adjourned signee die. So this bill has no, no chance of passing anyways. I, please vote no so we can, we can move on. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Considine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did get a little chuckle about Representative McDonald's speech about no input. Neither Representative Haley nor Representative Baker made any attempt to contact me. I do chair a committee, so I thought that was a bit odd. And as of the start of this session, I've not seen the bill. Now, I just checked my email, and 47 minutes after we started, I received a email with the bill in it from Representative Haley. Will Representative Haley yield for a question?
She will. Representative Considine.
Representative Haley, Representative Baker did mention that not, this had not been put through the committee process whatsoever. Again, I've not seen it until 47 minutes after we started today. Was there any public input? Was there any public discussion about this bill prior to today?
Representative Haley.
Representative Considine, I don't believe a lot of what we've discussed on emergency powers over the past six months in special sessions has gone through committee. And it's interesting that you'd ask me if this has received public input when the purpose of my resolution is to get public input to this body.
So the answer to my question-
Representative Considine.
So the answer to my question is no. This has not been put before the voters. They've not had an opportunity at all to weigh in on this, which is one of our fundamental tenants in this body. I think that alone, I'm going to be voting no. And again, hopefully I'll get a chance to read it after this, but I don't understand why I couldn't have at least gotten an email the day before. So I got a chance to look at it, maybe discuss it with some of the people in my district. That just doesn't make sense to me at all. Thank you. Oh, Representative McDonald, if you want to see some of the examples of what you were talking about when you were questioning Representative Fabian and Representative Becker, I invite you to take a look at Representative Munson's Facebook page. Thank you.
The Majority Leader, the member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And members, I think that Representative Munson provided the most important point that we could possibly make at the conclusion of this debate, which is, the Senate has already adjourned. They did not take up the bill proposed here today. They did not take up a resolution to end the governor's emergency orders. They elected a new Senate president and adjourned signee die. We are in a dire time, and we need to make sure that the governor has the tools he needs. Our public health department has the tools it needs. Our local public health officials have the tools they need to combat this pandemic. Today, we've heard from physicians on the front lines of this fight describe how it's pushing our healthcare system to the brink. Our job as legislators is to give the governor and the commissioners who are managing the state's response the tools they need to fight this and find ways to mitigate the damage being done by this pandemic to save the lives and the livelihoods of Minnesotans. There are many constructive and positive things that we could do together to mitigate the economic impact of this and to work closely with the federal government to provide support for individuals, families, and businesses who are hurting. We can't afford to continue to let Washington politics get in the way of that. At the same time, our local public health response would be stronger if more Minnesotans were complying with the social distancing guidelines already in place. Please reach out to people in your communities, set a good example, make sure that everyone understands the importance of following these guidelines. If everyone was doing what Representative McDonald was describing, we would not be in this crisis. This is not a thing that is inevitable. It is a thing that we have created through our own lack of attention to basic safety standards. So members, vote no today. Let's adjourn this special session, signee die. Let's look at ways we can come together to save businesses, to help renters, to help homeowners, to help families who are struggling, to help our students do better, to help Minnesota recover as best we possibly can through this deadly illness. Vote no, and then let's get back to work.
The member from Isanti, the Minority Leader, Representative Doubt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and, and members. I really appreciate the debate today, and I especially appreciate Representatives Haley and Representative Baker on the work that you did to put this bill together. It's not new. It was introduced in previous special sessions. It's an idea that's been floating around for six months or more. I, I will ask members to just pause for a minute and think about the bill. Think about what's actually before the body, and I'm sincere in that. This bill isn't about COVID, doesn't even mention COVID. But I'll tell you, listening to the debate today, I'm not sure anybody read the bill. I'm not sure anybody actually looked through to see what it does or what the intent of the bill was. And I'm very sincere. Just take a pause, look it up online. It's very easy to do. We all know how to do that. It was in today's introductions. Somebody doesn't have to email it to you for you to read it. But thank you, Representative Haley, for doing that. It's really simple. The bill doesn't end the peacetime emergency, but you wouldn't know that after listening to the debate today. Today's debate could have been a debate about ending the peacetime emergency. It could have been a debate today about whether COVID is a real thing or not, or whether COVID is serious, or whether people take it seriously or not. In fact, had people at home just listened to the debate today, they wouldn't have any idea what this bill was about because almost none of the debate today was about this bill. What this bill is about is about the legislature having a little bit of say, about the legislature being involved in just a little bit of the process. Because there is no argument, and I heard no argument today on the House floor, that the legislature has been involved in the process at all. We have not. We don't have hearings on COVID. We don't have hearings on the governor's emergency powers or his executive orders. And I bet you're like me, and people contact me all the time and say, hey, can you tell the governor this, or can you tell the governor that? Or they ask me, what's going to happen? What's today's executive order going to be? I don't know. How would I know? The governor's not talking to me. He did give us a little heads up, the legislative leaders, about, I don't know, 12 hours before he made the announcement this week, but he asked us to keep that confidential, and I did. And he gave us some of the background on, on how he made those decisions, but he also indicated to us that he didn't talk to restaurant owners, that he didn't talk to Hospitality Minnesota. We know that he didn't talk to school and superintendents. And, and those things are concerning. I don't, I don't question for one second that our governor is doing what he thinks is right to keep us safe, and this bill isn't about that. This bill isn't about whether people believe COVID is real or not. It is real, and people should wear masks, and they should be careful, and they should social distance. Do you need me to repeat that? COVID is serious. You should wear a mask. You should social distance. You should be careful. You should take precautions. But COVID's not going away tomorrow. And as I, as I have stood at this microphone month after month, now we're in our sixth special session, asking this legislature to engage with the governor and asking this legislature to take its role as elected officials seriously and helping our governor work to keep Minnesotans safe. Has our governor made some right decisions? Yes. Has he made some wrong decisions? Yes. My guess is not a single person in here would disagree with that. Did the Senate go home? Yes. Does that mean we shouldn't do our job? No! Here we are, and we were all elected to be here. And you've got two of the most reasonable, collaborative, thoughtful members of this legislature who just happen to be from the minority party, who have brought forward a proposal that doesn't end the emergency powers. It doesn't limit the governor's ability to react to them. That's the most important thing that I want to stress because I heard a number of people say, we can't do it, we can't do this because the governor needs to be able to- This bill, if you have read it, and please, do not press your button or respond to a roll call vote without having read this bill, or you won't be doing your job. Because we do, as elected officials, have the obligation to know what we're voting on and to really think it through. This bill doesn't limit the governor's ability in one way, shape, or form to respond to the emergency powers. It simply lets us review them 30 days later after he makes an executive order. You know, I went through a similar kind of rewrite and, and redraft of 13 to, to give us some ability and to try to, you know, mine, mine went a little further than this. I did that a few months ago. I think it was maybe before the June or July special session. Had numerous meetings with the governor's office to do that. Had great conversations. I think he understood, or at least the staff that I worked with in his office understood what the concerns were from, from us in the legislature. We didn't get to final agreement because frankly, I think the governor wanted to just maintain every bit of flexibility that he has. This one, you, you could not, you could not ask the governor to move less and still ask him to move. I, I can't think of anything that, that would, that would actually be movement that would move less than this. This is the most reasonable, this is the minimum that I think anybody who serves in the legislature should expect. And this isn't partisan. Doesn't matter who the, who the governor is. Doesn't matter which party's in control of the legislature. This is just about the legislature having a say as a co-equal branch of government in what's happening in a state of emergency. Doesn't limit the governor's ability to react or respond. He can still issue an executive order. This doesn't change that. Those executive orders still have the full force and effect of law. Doesn't change that. This just says that once he issues them after a certain amount of time, I think it's 30 days, that the governor, excuse me, that the legislature can review them. Doesn't say we have to, just says we can. And we can do it individually. Right now, under Chapter 12, our only recourse is to end the governor's emergency powers And what happens when you do that is all of the executive orders also end completely and abruptly. But this would just give the legislature a little more flexibility. And I think to Representative Haley's credit, this would make the governor think, oh, okay, well, when I issue this executive order, within the next 30 days, the legislature's probably going to do some hearings on this, which we want, right? I think all of us should want that. And the governor is going to think, not only are they going to do hearings, but they have an opportunity to say, do we agree with this? Would we continue it, or would we end it? This bill, if enacted, still allows one party, as long as both, both bodies of the legislature here are, are controlled by different parties, it still allows one party to side with the governor and to uphold every one of his emergency orders. Doesn't change that. So this isn't partisan. But here's what I want to ask you, and I want you to sincerely and very honestly do a little soul searching on why you're here in the legislature. Because I can't tell you the number of times I've had members say to me, you know what? We have to do what's right before we have to do what our party tells us to. And I always care about what's doing, doing what's right overdoing what my party would want me to, or what the governor would want me to. And I think back to, you know, as we have some new members who will be coming into this chamber shortly after the first of the year, and they're going through the, the orientation process, and there's a lot of conversations in the orientation process by sitting members of this legislature who talk about the need for collaboration and, and the need for working together and the need for doing what's right for you and your district and for this body over doing what's right for our party. And I want you to think back if you still believe that. Because we've got two of the most thoughtful, collaborative members of this legislature who, as I said, just happen to be from the minority party, who brought forward the most reasonable thing that I could think of that doesn't limit the governor's ability to respond to this pandemic in any way, shape, or form, doesn't limit the number of tools in his toolbox in any way, shape, or form. It simply puts another tool in our toolbox should and only in the event that we would choose to use- choose to use it. But I'll tell you that after serving in this chamber, year in and year out for years, members become jaded. Because many times, good ideas only come to you if you're in the minority, or excuse me, if you're in the majority. And somehow, minority members don't ever feel like a good idea gets advanced, simply because you happen to be in the minority. So I want you to think back about that attitude that you had when you first got elected, and think about these new members that are just going to be coming in now. And think about if that's really real, and if you still really believe that. If you still really believe in collaboration. Or if you want to defeat this bill just because it came from the minority party. And just because you walked into this chamber today or dialed in on the phone, having already made your mind up that we were not making any changes to anything, and that we were not going to let a speech on the House floor change our mind or sway our opinion. Ask yourself that. And ask yourself if you're going to snuff out the last little bit of sense of collaboration that exists in this chamber, in two of the members who are still fostering that sense of collaboration. Is it worth it? Is that really what we want to do in the chamber today? To take the last little pilot light of collaboration and snuff it out? To a bill that won't impact any of the things that I heard debate on here today? We couldn't just say, you know what? Yeah, it wasn't our idea, but it's a good one. It's not going to change the world, but it's still a good idea. It still will make things better. And by God, I came here to make things better, even if it's just a centimeter at a time. We shouldn't miss an opportunity to take it. Because a centimeter of good right now in the world is tough to come by. So ask yourself if it's better to snuff out the collaboration in these two members who brought this bill for the right reasons and did it because they care about our state and care about this legislative body and want to work with our governor to keep Minnesotans safe. Ask yourself today if that's worth it. And if you can hold your head high, walking out of here, knowing that you're going to defeat a bill just because it didn't come from your party and it wasn't your idea, and you're going to snuff out the last little bit of collaboration that exists in these members. Please, let's be better than that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Goodhue, the author of the motion, Representative Haley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members, for an interesting discussion and debate this afternoon. A couple of points I want to make, and thank you, Leader Doubt, for your comments. First of all, thank you to my colleague, Dave Baker, for partnering with me and spending so many hours on this proposal this week. And thank you to researcher Brian Cook, who also has been a great asset in my efforts. This bill, as Leader Doubt said, is not about the seriousness of COVID, and I just have to say that again in my closing comments. Nothing in this bill diminishes the seriousness of the disease and the situation that Minnesotans are facing right now. To Representative Mann and Representative Morrison, I share your heartache. We had an extended family member in ICU dying alone, myself and my family. We need to work together. Representative Lincoln, you said that. And to me, leadership means not abdicating my role to Washington, not abdicating my role to the governor's office in Minnesota. Leadership to me means we continue to come here and seek solutions for the betterment of our state and for the good of our constituents. That's what this proposal is all about. That's what Representative Baker and I are trying to do. We are trying to provide a little opening in this stalemate over emergency powers by continuing to give the governor the flexibility he needs to respond in a timely fashion and yet to bring the legislature along. That's what we were hired to do. And starting in January, we will have a bipartisan majority in this House with legislators who have voted before to end the governor's emergency powers. You've all said that's not what you want. So I'm providing you a path that we can, for us all, to work together without doing that. And yet, you spent the time today telling me I wasn't taking COVID seriously. I would hope the governor's listening, because I think my bill, Mr. Governor, gives you some breathing room. Because in effect, it allows us to change or to provide our input on an individual executive order while you maintain emergency powers. Mr. Governor, eight months ago, on March 27th, when you issued the stay-at-home order, you said to Minnesotans, please remember that we are in this together. On April 6th, at the State of the State, you commented that when Minnesotans, it's hard to talk behind a mask. When Minnesotans see a challenge, we tackle it, and no matter how daunting the challenge, Minnesotans have risen up by coming together. Five months ago, on June 29th, when we hit half a million tests, you stated again, we are all in this together, and we all praised our healthcare partners for helping us hit that milestone. Two months ago, September 20th, when you were interviewed about the process of managing through COVID at the six-month mark, you stated, I wonder if I had taken a more bipartisan approach and given lawmakers our larger role in policymaking decisions, maybe this still wouldn't be so charged. Two days ago, at your press conference announcing new restrictions, you said again, we can only do this together. That is what the resolution is all about, members. I urge a yes vote. As Leader Doubt said, this is the most reasonable and pragmatic step we can take to work together. Thank you, members. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Without objection, we'll revert to taking the call, the roll call.
Nelson M. Boy River, present.
Nelson M. Royal River, present.
Seeing no further discussion to the motion. Representative Doubt?
Madam Speaker, can you just remind folks in the chamber what this motion is and what a vote in favor or against does?
Representative Haley has brought a motion to declare an urgency pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. She moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended that House File 19 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon final passage. The clerk will take the roll.
Acum, no.
Acum, no. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, no.
Bonner, no. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn.
Becker Finn, no.
Becker Finn, no. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, no.
Bernardi, no. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo.
I figured what I did wrong.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, no.
Brand, no. Cantrell.
Cantrell, no.
Cantrell, no. Carlson A.
Carlson A, no.
Carlson A, no. Carlson L.
Carlson L, no.
Carlson L, no. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Claflin.
Claflin, no.
Claflin, no. Consoigne.
Consoigne, no.
Consoigne, no. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt. Doubt, aye. Davids. Davids, aye. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, no.
Eklund, no. Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, yes.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, no.
Gomez, no. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley. Haley, aye. Halverson.
Halverson, no.
Halverson, no. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Hanson, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan, no. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Herr.
Herr, no.
Herr, no. Hertos.
Hertos, aye.
Hertos, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Cagle.
Cagle, no.
Cagle, no. Katisa Waton.
Katisa Waton, no.
Katisa Waton, no. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Cresha.
Cresha, aye.
Cresha, aye. Kunish Podine. Lehman.
Kunish Podine, no.
Kunish Podine, no. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, no.
Lee, no. Lesch.
Lesch, no.
Lesch, no. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, no.
You get to hear me vault in a minute.
Luwak.
Luwak, aye.
Luwak, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, no.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, no.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, no.
Moeller, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nash.
Nash, aye.
Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New.
New, aye.
New, aye. Nor.
Nor, no.
Nor, no. Nornus.
Nornus, aye.
Nornus, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, no.
Olson, no. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, no.
Purcell, no. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, no.
Poppy, no. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robbins.
Robbins, aye.
Robbins, aye.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, no.
Sandell, no. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, no.
Sauk, no. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no. Scott. Scott, aye. Stevenson. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, no.
Tabkey, no. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Woginius.
Woginius, no.
Woginius, no. Waslowick.
Waslowick, no.
Waslowick, no. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler.
Winkler, no.
Winkler, no. Walgamot.
Walgamot, no.
Walgamot, no. Jong J.
Jong J, no.
Jong J, no. Jong T.
Jong T, no.
Jong T, no. Yuakim.
Yuakim, no.
Yuakim, no. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, no. Albright, votes aye.
Heinzmann, votes aye.
Dafne, votes aye. Or Dafne, votes no.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 60 ayes and 73 nays, the motion does not prevail. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. This is to notify you that the Senate is now duly organized for the 2026 special session pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Minnesota statutes. The message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate. Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. I have the honor to announce that the Senate of the state of Minnesota is now duly organized pursuant to law with the election of the following officer, David J. Tomassoni, President. The message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate. Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. This is to notify you that the Senate is about to adjourn the sixth special session. Signee die. Message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
Do you want all of them or you just want?
Madam Speaker.
Representative Douth.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your parliamentary inquiry.
Maybe I misheard it. Who did they say the secretary or the president of the Senate was?
I think you heard it, Representative Douth. The non-controversial motions are at the House desk and online.
Hearing no objection.
Hearing no objection. We'll take action on those motions first. Motions are approved.
House Concurrent Resolution Number One, a House Concurrent Resolution relating to Minnesota's peacetime emergency, terminating the peacetime emergency pursuant to the authority granted under Minnesota Statute, Section 12.31, subdivision two, paragraph B. This is introduced by Douth and is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration. House Concurrent Resolution Number Two, introduced by Draskowski, Barr, Miller, and Munson, a House Concurrent Resolution relating to Minnesota's peacetime emergency, terminating the peacetime emergency pursuant to the authority granted under Minnesota Statute, Section 12.31, subdivision two, paragraph B. Draskowski moves that the rules be so far suspended that House Concurrent Resolution Number Two be now considered and placed upon its adoption.
The member from Wabashaw, Representative Draskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, nearly two years ago, every one of us took an oath of office to protect and defend the Constitution of our state and our country. We have in front of us Section 12.31, a law that not only is written unconstitutionally but has been carried out unconstitutionally by a governor that has accumulated powers that have resembled that of a monarch or a tyrant. It is our responsibility, members, to take back the freedoms guaranteed us in those constitutions, those freedoms that we put forward an oath to honor and protect when we were here nearly two years ago and took office after being elected. Members, I don't know that we need to debate this a long time, but I think it's incumbent upon us to bring forward a message to this governor that if he extends these peacetime emergencies again in December, we are going to be here to turn back this unconstitutional situation to one that respects the separation of powers of the Minnesota Constitution, one that doesn't violate the Constitution through a legislative veto, one that respects the freedoms of the people of Minnesota and the state that we all love so dearly. So, members, I ask you to support this motion, to bring forward this resolution, to send that message. I realize that the Senate members is no longer in session and that this could not be enacted today by both bodies, but it's important for us to send a message to the governor that we are looking out for freedom because, for we know that the price of freedom is eternal vigilance. Thank you, Madam Speaker. With that, Madam Speaker, I would request a roll call on the motion.
Representative Draskowski requests a roll call. Given that there are not 15 members in the chamber, if you would like to vote for a roll call and you are a member of the Minnesota House of Representatives, send an email to househands@house.mn from your official account. There will not be a roll call. Is there any discussion to the Draskowski motion? Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I urge a no vote. We've debated this extensively and there is no further function, so I would ask members to vote no and we can adjourn.
Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We voted on this numerous times. I have supported it and I would encourage members to continue to support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion does not prevail.
Winkler moves that the chief clerk be and he is hereby authorized to correct and approve the Journal of the House 2026 special session for today, Thursday, November 12, 2020, and that he be authorized to include in the Journal for today any subsequent proceedings.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, please vote yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails.
Winkler moves that the chief clerk be and is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the governor by message that the House of Representatives is about to adjourn the 2026 special session. Signee die.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I ask for a yes vote and hope that Senate President Tomassoni is waiting to pick it up.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails.
House Concurrent Resolution Number Two is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn this special session. Signee die.
Members, before we proceed to that, Representative Erdal would like to be heard under the order announcements. Representative Erdal.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I ask today that we honor the memory of John Bernhagen, who passed away September 26th at the age of 86. John served in the Minnesota House from 1969 to 1972 and in the Senate from 1973 to 1992, a total of 8,764 days. A farmer from Hutchinson, John served with dignity and distinction as he emphasized agriculture and economic development. He was a kind, affable man who cared deeply about his family and those he represented in the legislature. It was an honor to know him. I valued his influence. I ask for a moment of silence in memory of John Bernhagen.
Members, please join me for a moment of silence to honor former Hutchinson State Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn this special session. Signee die.
Representative Winkler moves that the House adjourn this special session. Signee die. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails and this special session is adjourned. Signee die.